Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. We will start as with our cussing with the prayer of the blades. So let's pray. Well, we thank you for this day and this opportunity that we have to serve this community. We ask that you would bless this community and bless our local, state, national leaders. Give them wisdom and judgment to make good decisions that will help us move forward with our communities and our state and our national things that we want to do to make our communities better places to live. We ask that you would bless this commission and our leadership team with wisdom and judgment to make good decisions on behalf of our customers and our community and help us always to do what's in their best interests. Be with our employees, Lord, as they're out there working. Keep them safe, bring them safe to their families and watch over them. Best eat, we bless this food, the dirt from our bodies and bless us as we do your will. Bless these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today's work session, we have a couple of informational presentations and then we have one action item.
I can leave this up for it.
Yeah, Laker Tech, Pratt &amp; Co., product center. So we'll know who you are.
What do I do if I put it down? I don't kick it over.
I'm sorry.
I could move my food. It was wrong.
I'm sorry.
There you go. Should you want to catch the natives in their natural habitat?
We'll pretend like we're working.
Okay. So now we're photogenic. So we've got a cabin class expansion update by Russ Evans and then Dana Wilson, who's the manager of HR, will do a... we're going to do our benefits evaluation and compensation study that we do on a periodic basis and so that'll be a second and then we'll have one action item and a brief close session. So with that, Russ is ready. I think we're ready.
There's nothing going on. You know what? It's a big hole. All right, so we'll go through the cabin expansion project update. So on contract one, which is the 36-inch sled or water main and an 8-inch sled line, we've had zero recordables. We're in procurement right now. Piping valve procurement is ongoing. Some middles are being submitted and processed. Submittals are one of the types of materials they want to use. We go through the approval process, then they can enter a couple of those to purchase everything. So we'll receive like this particular type of valve, ACR reviews that we review and we all agree on, then they can purchase. So we've had 19 submittals that have been received from Gorney and 16 have been approved. We've got three still in review. RPIs, request for information. This has been released. Minimum on this project, we've only had one, so it's been reviewed and completed, so it's been going real well. So we've received 8,000 foot to 17,000 foot 36-inch pipe and it's been staged along the route. I think you've seen it in the fields. If you've been driving towards the hospital, Daniels Lane, Pleasant Valley or over towards our sleds of Goons, you'll see it all laying in the fields. We've had several bores we've completed. This is the bore that's leaving cabin. That's the backlog cabin. Goes underneath 144, comes out on the other side of 144 that heads east down to Keystone, turns down between it, clean green, goes down underneath the railroad tracks. Well, we're actually have already gone underneath the railroad tracks now and from when we put these pictures. That's the next board pit. That was the one underneath the railroad tracks. Both of our CXX boards are complete and they're working well. CSX said absolutely no issues, so.
How deep do you go when you have to go into the railroad?
It depends. Like that one, we were down about 20 feet.
No.
And then we've got one to 100 Daniels is going to be 25 feet down, so we're going deep on that.
Do they have to halt the trains when you're actually doing a board or anything like that? So you don't have to have any?
We just boil it. So here's where we're at. Leaving cabin, like I said, end up and we're over in here. Now that's their one crew. They've got two crews working. The other crew jumped down here to, you know where our lagoons are on the bypass? They started there at the edge of our lagoon and they're heading down until they hit stirrup mechanical or they're going to stop. And they're jumping back and going and heading to 8-inch ACP sled line. So they'll come back to the plant here, make this board and then they're going to catch this group just in time by time they get to stirrup mechanical so we're not on certain properties multiple times. If there are certain properties they just want to get through and some of them that they can't, so it's pretty good plan.
How many feet a day are they averaging?
Lately about 180 feet, so they've been moving good. Now, when they hit a board or something or any issue, it's been having a whole lot. I've been really pleased with them. They're very, very professional groups of work. Scheduled needsments, as of July 23rd, we had 2,000 a week, but more than that right now, even count the date of 36 inches. The plan finishes November, which is substantially earlier than the March 4th 2020 date, so they put two teams on there to see if they can get it done. We don't have one easement not finalized. We don't see that as an issue. And in the manor, they had two crews, they're at 14, so they're topped out right now. That'll be as many as, that'll be the top of their crew level. Okay, their cost summary was just over 6.7 million, zero change orders, total payment request date, 507,000 and a total retention of 50,000. So going pretty good. Any questions on the first contract?
I haven't paid them anything yet.
Well, they were, they kept, well, that's a little bit, I guess, unbounced, we're paying for the pipe directly to save on taxes because we can buy it as municipal tax-free. So we're buying the pipe ourselves. So we've built, we've paid several amount of money, just not to Gorney. That's all we've actually paid to Gorney.
They're not going to quit working because we haven't paid them anything?
Oh, no, no, no. They've paid, in fact, they've only got one invoice and we weren't paid it and we just got a second one. So, I don't know, everybody's happy. We pay our bill.
Who's security?
Because they will stop, I promise you, if you don't pay your bills.
It's, yeah, it's a combination of Tim's group and Pat and Stephen are bringing them all.
Okay, on contract two, safety, we had one recordable. A gentleman was bending a piece of rebar, slipped out his hand. When he did, he took a knee, took a knee into a piece of concrete, put his kneecap up a little bit. If it had not been his kneecap, it probably would have been a recordable, but it's a moving part, you got to, so you end up paying the stitches. They have a really strong, Bowen has a really strong safety program. We immediately had a standout. We attended. They do constantly do walk downs. We do walk downs on the site. I mean, it's a really safe site. He was a new employee, hadn't been there very long, so.
This was another new employee?
No, 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 no. It was a colleague. Procurement has continued. Vows, equipment installation, piping and fittings, they're all showing up here today. On their site, on this contract, we've had 95 submittals. We've processed 80 of those and we have 15 currently in review. In the RPIs, we've had 63 RPIs and we've processed 49 and we have 14 in review. Okay, I wanted to show you some comparisons. This is the filter building. So this was the excavation as of May. This was it as of June and this was it in July. These are the aerial photos that we have taken this month. You see a sort of what we were fighting, getting in the mud and then even more mud in July. So they've done a real good job of keeping it going, but the problem with that sandy material is when it gets real wet, it liquefies and it just fills everything back in every what you dig. So that's been a challenge, but they've been moving really well. There's another look, so they're going to see how deep it is. When you went on your tours, you remember going down to the bottom of the basement? That's down here, so about 40 foot from ground levels. So here's the clarifier area from May, June and July. You can see the progress has been more really strong. They're pouring the concrete, the bottom for clarifiers now. I'll show you on the next slide. You can see that was July 1st and that's July 24th, so they're moving fast. And just to scale how big this excavation is, see the person standing there, so it's a very large excavation.
And the plant is in service. You might point out while we're doing this, make sure we can keep it operating.
Yeah, you can see we were out in May and back in service again. The part of it was when we worked with Bowen, they came up with this pile system, this sheet pile system to keep, so we could keep the clarifiers in service. All right, this is the chrom tank. We started this in June, towards the end of June and then we got hit with a big rain in June, we got hit two big rains in July. This was after the July 5th rain. You see the, they're damming and you can see the, you see these big pipes sticking up? Like I said, probably those pipes are in there, they just fill up with sand and you get to go in there with pressure washers and clean them all out and redo all your excavations. So that was, that was a not a fun event there. This is another look at the chrom tank. Chrom will be mobilized in Monday, so they have, do have it ready to go for them on schedule. So that was a big fight, but they pulled it off. Original contract substantial completion was January the 20th. Final completion is February 19th with the start date being 13th. We did receive an extension request from Bowen for two weeks. One of the weeks was a result of the June 24th, seven inches of rain and then the other one was a result of the July 3rd and 5th rain that you saw in the pictures of. We reviewed them, ACG and Arden and my team did. We agreed it's fine. We've approved it at no cost to us. There is no cost for scheduled extension. They had overhead risk in that, so. The new revised project schedule will be substantial completion February 3rd, final completion March 5th and complete start commission May 27th. Now, they, now the big reason for that is those dates are tied to liquidating damages. That does not mean that Bowen's not going to try and hit their original date and kind of ways to hit their original date. That's just to protect themselves because they did hit, suffer those delays. But I anticipate we could finish quite a long time if all the stores line perfectly. Cost contract summary, total authorized contract value was $39,735,000, zero change order date. Total payment request date, 6.2 million. Total pay approved, 4.1 million. Retains 623,000. Our current manor is at 50. Depending on how the subs between mechanical, electrical, everybody balances out, it'll max out somewhere between 85 and 100, depending on certain days. Field change requests, current approved is a deduct of 183,000 from the contract. Current estimated as of right now is a deduct of 295,000. So the first changeover won't occur until we eat up the deducts and then go above our contract value, the zero dollar mark. And I think it's 15,000 or 15% whichever, so 15,000 when we go over that, that'll be the first changeover. Hopefully we won. Also, these are local contractors and mentors that have been using. So as far as the community goes, I really use a lot of the, a lot of our local mentors And we have a video we can show you. Any questions before the video? So we got our last video of a general look at the site from beginning to now and then we have one of the chrom tape progression. Thank you, Ryan. I guess I have some music.
We're recording images every 15 minutes.
Uh huh. I think we'll shoot that one. Got one more we're showing, quick little thing. This one is up yesterday morning. So they're ready for a move across. Any questions on the cabin project?
You can watch that eight or 10 times, but still not see it all. You can tell when it's running. I wonder what they'll actually pay on Facebook. Probably we can. Sure, see. I'm sure they can. Okay, thank you, Russ. It's going very well, as Russ mentioned. You can see how much we've watched that time. We've watched those holes fill up with water and pump back out. They're doing a great job out there. I sat in on the last construction meeting and we're very pleased with that. Next thing is, is we wanted to come back and kind of give you a little bit of outline of our last compensation benefit study, what we did and then kind of scope of what we are proposing to do for the one we'll do this year, this fiscal year. So Dana's going to lead us through that.
Okay. So we're going to go through and summarize what we did in 2014 with the study and then outline the project objectives and the scope of services that we'd like to see done in the 2020 Comp and Benefit Survey Project. And then talk about a timeline and then get your feedback on this project. So in 2013 and 14, there were three phases that it was broken out into. So phase one, there was a review of all the jobs with a 15-point skill factor evaluation process and that resulted in 122 job descriptions that were revised, evaluated and then uploaded into the purchase software database that we actually still use today. And in phase two, they completed a market survey of those jobs based on pay benefits and also included the incentive pay type system. They took those 122 jobs and compared them to different data sources and those included Big Rivers, Bowling Green Municipal, Frankfurt Plant Board and Paducah Municipal and a few others as well. Phase three, they took the outputs of phase one and phase two and created a revised job pay grade table and wage table, reviewed those and made implemented changes and we implemented that new wage table and wage scale in 2015. So we believe phase one is still considered valid today with, we don't need to go through all 122 jobs and we still use that 15-point skill factor process today. So moving into how, what we feel the project objectives for the 2020 study is obviously we want to maintain a system that provides fair and equitable salaries based on the job requirements that we have and the responsibilities that each job has comparable to the different jobs in the region or different employers in the region. Maintain a comp system that aligns with and supports our organization and our management philosophy and obviously to balance the desire to pay competitively, to recruit and find and retain the best employees within our financial resources while being physically responsible. So the scope of services that we're looking for is to conduct a wage survey with comparable employers by direct survey or other acceptable means to do that based on wages, benefits, incentive pay programs, really a total comp type survey. We would look at a comprehensive list of the job titles that we have excluding the power plant positions and excluding any obvious internal hierarchy type positions, meaning crew leaders, supervisors. That leaves us with approximately 80 positions that we would look at or we would want to look at. So we want to establish appropriate valuation of the positions relative to other OMU positions and also taking consideration those internal hierarchies and any other positions that are very challenging to fill right now. I shouldn't even say right now, really we've had some challenging positions to fill here at OMU. We would want to benchmark OMU's benefit package with comparable employees and some of the areas that come out with that is what are some other non-monetary benefits that other employees are offering that we don't offer here at OMU or compared to OMU? And then also analyze the CERs Tier 1, 2 and 3 pensions plans with recommendations on bridging any identifiable gaps that there are. Also with that scope would come if there needs to be any changes made to the written OMU compensation program and make any changes to that, provide any preliminary, final reports and then formulate any strategies that we need to do to implement those changes. So the timeline that we're looking at is pretty aggressive and tight, but in order to get us to the budget, next budget year, we're looking at obviously having these discussions now and getting feedback on the scope, putting the, going through the RFP process in September, October, having the study done November and December and then coming back and making a recommendation, whatever that might be. And if we need to move forward, we would include that in our next budget season discussion. That's a very quick wrap of that project objectives and the scope of services, so leads us to requesting your feedback on this project, the questions that you have.
What do you expect this to cost?
They've given us a range of close, close to 15,000 to 20,000.
Is, you know, of course we're excluding the power plant employees. And we may, and I discussed this last time we come in, because we discussed the division between what's considered required of the power industry positions and those positions that are independent of really the power industry. Specifically, let's say customer service, whether they're doing it for a power company, whether they're doing it for AT&amp;T, whether they're doing it for the city, how, you know, whether a job or being a customer service representative, how is that defined relative to what's locally? I know, I have, I have a question about that. And the other thing is that didn't we just make an adjustment in line? We didn't. So, and I understand that that's an adjustment for then, if you do a compensation survey's done, it's just going to compare what they're already adjusted. Wait, I understand that, but I just wanted to bring a point out that the last time we did this, it was, you know, we had the power plant issue and things and it's market changes. So I'm not saying that there doesn't need to be a compensation study. I just think the data that we received before that very, very closely. Yeah, I don't disagree with that. You know, the last time we did it, we did a very, a very overhaul basically of a lot of job descriptions. We hadn't done one, I think, since probably 2007, 2008 before that one. And it was, you know, it was a big, a big undertaking. We rewrote all the job descriptions. We got consistent formatting of those. We did a lot of work that we don't have to repeat this time. This time it's, as you mentioned, looking at where we are with respect to our peers and folks that we compete with for talent. And you make a valid point that there are some positions that, you know, aren't necessarily industry specific. Most of ours are industry specific. There are a few that are not. So that's a valid point. We could look at other customer service types or other things like that with respect to alignment. You know, Tim and I have been talking with lots of other folks in our business. This is the most, one of the most challenging areas in the industry right now, especially for public power. We are falling behind as a, as a segment of the industry in pay and we're regularly now getting beat out by contractors and co-ops because they have upped their game, so to speak. That's something that we need to take a comprehensive look at and we may end up, there may be another adjustment there. We don't know until we take a look. I think we've made good progress with this last one. And there may be other positions, you know, we've, over the last, what, few years, we've modified with incentive pay, how we do the annual increases. We need to see based on a comprehensive comparison if we've fallen behind on these positions with respect to other folks that, that we're competing with for talent. So I think it's a good time to do it. I'm not predicting that there's going to be a huge change and a lot of changes like we had in 2013 or 2014. I don't expect that, but I think we need to know where we are and make some, some good rational, you know, backed by the data decisions on where we may need to make adjustments. I think one thing that we talked about that Dana touched on, and you all jump in, I'm monopolizing conversation. But it is, you know, we know we've lost ground with our pension benefit and is there something there we need to look at with respect to moving forward for those folks that are coming in that don't have that defined pension plan, whether it's 401K matching or something like that? So we'll look and see what other folks are doing, what may make sense for us to start looking at. We may not make the recommendation this time, but we may. And other benefits, you talked about other benefits, you know, we're competing with, you know, with folks that are somewhat more nimble than us when they change benefits. We, in our business, we don't like to change things a lot, but there may be things we can do that are, that are attractive to new employees and really don't have a, you know, a huge impact on our bottom line, but just we need to look at those things, you know. Other things we can do with that kind of non-monetary.
How are you going to treat water? Are you just going to look at the power industry? What are you going to do about water? What are you going to do about power?
We look at water. We will look at all those individually, so we're not going to compare a fiber technician to a power plant technician.
Well, I understand that.
So we will, we will, many of those utilities you saw have all three divisions and we will compare apples to apples. So water, you know, we're redoing the job descriptions because we have some folks that are, some positions that cover both power and water. We're redoing those and just, so when power goes away, there are only water classifications and we need to see what those jobs, how those jobs compare that are just water. So that's, for us, it's always been a significant part of these, of these evaluations has always been focused on where most of our employees work, at the power plant. You know, we had 100 out of 240 at the plant. That's why the emphasis was there. But now we're moving to, to a non-generation on electric side, poles and wires, and that's where our focus will be this time. And then water, we will compare water to water, telecom to telecom and the others to their appropriate category.
So what's the geographic area you're talking about in the survey?
We like to stay, you know, in this geographical area, so you saw most of those folks are in Kentucky. I think, I don't know if we got anything from Beckton last time.
I don't remember who the sources were, but.
You know, some of the other, you know.
A lot of the studies that we used were southeast. So that's, that's one thing I think, Ted, because I know you well enough by now, you talk about the data sources and that's where you'll dig in. Where do you want your data sources at? Do you want just local utilities? Because I can tell you what a customer service rep makes and that by using surveys or studies versus having to call, you know, Texas Gas or call a bank, but we can use those in our service if you want. We can do more local companies for those functional. those functional jobs like I T or.
I mean, the bottom line is all about turnover, and it just looks like the meaning is where the area is where you think it actually would impact turnovers and lose people. But I guess the question I had, you saying that phase one is still valid, and you're looking at evaluating like eighty positions.
Yep.
The survey, have you ever considered doing it in-house?
Doing the survey in-house?
Yeah.
I'm just going to tell you.
I'll let these guys answer.
We took a lot of surveys over the years, I mean, J T can attest to that, and the most effective and one, they ended up with the greatest result was when they did themselves. H R, it seemed like they had, they got better responses from other organizations, they could speak the same way, they knew when they were comparing position, positions, and wasn't getting a third party involved trying to do all that. I don't know, I just weren't able to consider it.
You know, I, when we do the surveys, and you guys correct me on speaking out of turn, we're pretty heavily involved in working with them. We don't just turn them over and say, come back when you got a report. We keep our, ourselves involved. So I think, I, I agree that a lot of times utilities will be more open to value, as we, with other utilities, we, the last time we did it, I think, we got good data.
Yeah, we got, and basically, the last time too, they're going to analyze the data for us, but I opened the door for them, and our general manager. We, we sent emails to all the data sources we wanted, told them, like at Bowling Green, I had an H R contact, we would like you to participate, and if you do participate, we'll share the results to you. We'll mask the results, but we'll share them. So yes, we got in the door, and then the consultant, they said, okay, I'm going to send you Dr. Maddox, but he calls you, give him the information, and then he would take the lead from there. But so we did kind of a little bit of a joint in-house of getting them introduced to the sources that we wanted.
You know, this is odd, because I just received in the mail today from the guest department later, want to do a salary study for my industry, and I'm required by law to spend an hour in the survey. Yeah, but it says that you're required by law to complete this survey. Here's your password, get on and answer all these questions about how you pay people.
Probably legally bound to tell the whole truth, not the truth.
Yeah, you're, it's probably.
They said they're not going to share the information.
Using the consultant. And I agree that consultants can, you can get out of that field, but I think we do their job of managing and working with them. I just talked to the manager at Henderson about that, they just completed a similar scope of study, they're having similar issues that we are with, with some similar positions. And they use a consultant, and they were very happy with the outcome, it was in the same ballpark of what we're expecting to spend, less than twenty thousand dollars. And, you know, he was recommending to me that, hey, we had, we're really pleased with what we got, and they said they'd be happy to work with us and provide us their data for their system, so.
There is a peculiar thing about using a consultant, we hire a consultant who supplies us with information. In theory, that information belongs to the consultant, so you can't share it with somebody. Do it in-house, you can share it. Now, they may say you can share it, they may say that they're going to share the Henderson thing, but when it comes down to it, that consultant's got to say, okay, because it's a, it's a product of his work.
Well, unless they wrote a contract where he can.
I was going to say, it depends on what we tell them upfront, and we own the data.
Yeah, I just don't ask, so, oops.
And we've had that come up in other, not in this area, but other things we've done with consultants, and you usually make it clear that at the end of the day, we're paying you together data for us, we own that data, we don't let them. And we can share with anybody.
Be sure to put that in a reason.
And when we share the data, you know, we mask, you know, like Michael says, we don't, you know, we don't utility A B C D, so we don't share anything that, because some utilities are kind of leery of their names out there.
Right.
But no contractual obligations in our last one.
Yeah, that was, that was one thing, I went through to the presentation that you're going to use a consultant, it doesn't say in how that you're going to.
Yeah, we, yeah.
And then subsequently to that is, how do you pick which consultant to use? Do you put it out for this?
We're going to.
That was the request for proposals, so that's kind of tells you that you use the consultant there, when you say R F Ps, request for proposals. So we send it out, say we need this work done, who can do the work, and then they submit it back, and I can do the work.
So you already prepicked out the person.
No, you can't.
What about the one you used before?
Johansson, we use Johansson Group, and that's, we're still using their software to do our job descriptions. They will be a better.
They will be a better.
Yeah, they enjoyed working with us, they still work with us on the system that we have, and they help us out with the cost of living adjustments or any survey, salary survey data we might be looking for, like even lineman and things of that nature, special projects, so they will, but they got to be the lowest qualified bid.
I'm just concerned, if you're, you're looking at fifteen thousand dollars, it just tells me that either you're going to do most of the work in-house anyway, or they're just going to give you a candidate that they've already got, that's not a lot of money for consulting.
I agree with you.
And I just.
And I do agree with you that, that there will be a lot of work done in-house.
I can say that that would be one tenth, but you said it was one tenth of what it really would be.
Oh, really?
By the time you spend all your time.
Do you remember when we spent on Johansson when they did the full three phase scope?
Forty thousand, that includes buying the software and doing the phase one portion of it, which is a pretty administrative.
And they did a very comprehensive job, so, you know, but I'm kind of like you, I'm more used to things on engineering and stuff, and, you know, on the H R side, you know, I don't think it's as, as intensive as it is. And they, you know, they do this, the good thing about is we pick somebody who does this all the time, so they, they are pretty efficient at what they do. And I think, I think we'll, we'll get a good result, we'll pick a good, a good firm to work with. And, you know, we're obviously committing to spending the money on the, on the study, we're not committing to make any changes till we come back and have another, you know, couple sessions with you guys and say, this is what we've got, this is, this is something that I've been thinking about recommending.
And this number one, the scope of services that says da, 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 except for they need to include base wages plus incentive pay programs, we don't have an incentive pay program anymore, do we?
Yeah, basically, what she, I think she was saying there was total, we got to look at total compensation, because somebody could pay somebody more money, but we have better benefits. Or somebody might pay somebody a better base salary, or lower base salary, but has it incentive, we got to look at total compensation.
We don't want to use incentive program.
You are correct. But we, we need to.
We should be having to pay for somebody to tell us what that ought to be.
But I think you should survey other companies and ask them three questions, base, benefits, and incentive. And so if we don't ask that third question.
And what would they change about that?
Yes. If I don't ask that third question, I might not know exactly what their compensation alignment, because maybe they get ten thousand dollars bonus.
When you report that back to us, you report back what they said on each one of those, not just what we think it ought to be after based upon what we've got.
And I think we understand.
We'll tell you what we think it ought to be, but we'll tell you what it is based on the data.
It'd be data driven.
And it was said that, what benefits, non-monetary benefits other companies are offering compared to, that, that sort of makes you think that they're often better than we are. What, you don't get back to us and say, well, we're offering three, this, and this, and this, and nobody else is offering that, you will let us know that information as well.
Yes, you're correct.
Yeah, it works both ways. It will work both ways. If there's something we're offering and no one else does, you know, we will, we'll try to identify those.
We will be advised with that as well.
When you, when you question people about a compensation plan with these other places, you'll also ask, what would you change about your current compensation plan that you're not happy with right now? Because you get a bunch of data, and maybe, they may be in a twist, say this is not really like we'd like to have it. And I mean, that's a simple question to ask.
No, that's a good, that's a good thought.
So you'll be coming back with, when you're ready to make a recommendation based on R F P?
And do we know what plans we're going to be compared to? Because a lot of these are not going to be available like in Frankfurt, you know, they're part of that.
Oh, but they still have all the same positions. So, yeah, we will still get validated.
And do we look at cost of living in each one of these communities compared to what most.
That's one of the things that, while we try to stay regional, because we know cost of living is fairly, you know, similar. We wouldn't go and, 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 you know, there's a lot of public power in communities that we could get good data from, but then we'd have to adjust because cost of living in Austin, Texas, which has a big public power utility, is obviously different than us.
Well, even Lexington, Owensboro is a big difference, you know, even Louisville would be a big difference.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's a big difference, it certainly is a difference.
Well, I know, you look at rents up there, what they are in Owensboro, it's a pretty big difference.
Yeah, it basically, I can agree.
Probably thirty percent a month, you know.
And you try to normalize the data as much as possible, those sources, so if you went and did New York City, it would definitely have to be normalized.
Well, that's.
Yeah, but Louisville, Lexington.
There's going to be a lot of differences from the metropolitan communities than there is from like Owensboro.
That's, I think that's something you definitely need to look at.
Yeah.
You guys have the other?
It's just an opportunity, I mean, you asked for the opportunity, we just want to make sure that when we bring something back to you, it's the right data sources, it's within the scope that you want, you guys want.
I can't speak alone, commission, but I just want to do what's right. I just want to make sure I got your data and make a decision.
And the lineman, do we have?
Approximately nineteen.
Nineteen? And do we have a program whereby we're training additional lineman now in some manner? Or do you just train them when you hire them?
We, we're trying to hire them when they come in, they've already had the training through one of the Kentucky technical programs, that's what's been, been our best benefit so far. But if we were to hire someone, there is a process we have to go through training once we get them.
I was going to ask if there was some kind of a program in one of the colleges.
We're, we're fortunate, Madisonville Community Colleges put a, recently put a line of training program in, it would have a year and a half to build, and that's been a very beneficial site.
One of the things that, that we have on our list for this year, that Tim and, and H R and Michael and Dana and myself will be working on, is looking at developing kind of a temporary lineman apprenticeship program to bring, because right now, Tim needs people that hit the ground, that they have the training and some experience. And primarily, we would focus that on other opportunities to bring power plant guys, I said guys, power plant personnel over and put them in an apprenticeship program, train them to be linemen. It would be a bump up in head count, a temporary bump up, and we'll look at, you know, our demographics, if he's got some that are looking at retiring in three years, in three-year apprenticeship, how that would fit. So we're looking at that as part of our workforce planning for this year, and we'll be bringing a recommendation probably, you know, in conjunction with the budget, if we decide that that makes sense for us in some way.
And like when they have career days, are we participating in those in high schools, different places, to kind of let kids know what's available at O M U, what kind of salary they can earn working here, and the possibilities of that?
I don't know if we've been to a high school.
I don't think we've been to a high school.
Not as many as we probably.
I'm not sure that they.
Go to college, pick up the ones that can't get a job.
Sometimes there's a reason they can't get.
Yeah, I'm just saying it would be good if we had some kind of educational.
No, I, I think that's a good idea. You know, we, back in the day, we, we used to have the, the high schools, and, and sometimes the colleges contact us and ask us to come out, and we haven't had that, that I can recall lately.
Yeah, and basically, to keep yourself as an employer of choice, I understand the advertising piece of that, of getting yourself out there and educate.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. So the one action item we had for the day was time to renew our stop laws, and this is the D N F for, but it's the D N F for stop loss insurance.
Motion we approve the second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Thank you all, that was all we had. We do have a brief item for the closed session. If you're ready. Ready?
So we would need a motion to go into closed session, discuss personal matters, percentage care of six one eight ten one F, pending litigation, percentage care of six one eight ten one C in matters that are required, discuss the privacy of percentage care of six one eight ten one K, including but not limited to care of six one eight seventy-eight one C I, and care of six one eight seventy-two six.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.